End it tomorrow morning, but I'll have to talk to him about it. Let's see.
Okay.
You don't want it to wait till July? You want it on Thursday?
Well, see what he says whether we can do it. It's because Larry Boni needs to pay the companies that we deal with. We're not going to be doing that convention sent Bureau thing. We don't have to pay the first year, even if we do do it. And I'm not sure if it's going to get delayed because of the Corona. I don't know, you know, why we even bother this year.
Okay, I'll talk to him in the morning.
Okay. Hopefully, no one will interrupt us today.
Hope not.
Although I talked to Todd Catalano yesterday, so.
It's freaky.
You have to worry about. The police contract Thursday.
Yeah, he mentioned that.
Yeah.
But he'll be, I'm sure they'll monitor it.
Yeah, we're going to record them all and we're going to try to keep them in the waiting room as much as possible. I mean, plus we have the executive session first anyway. We have to go over the changes to the contract without any participation from the audience anyway.
Yep. That'll be good.
Yeah. I want to have the Colonel in on that. Councilman, is that okay to have the Colonel in on that executive session to answer any questions you guys may have?
Sure.
Okay, great.
That'd be great.
All right.
Yes. This should be short, I hope.
It looks that way.
Yeah, it looks like really. If we can get by the finance issue and yeah, I think we're going to be. I think we'll be pretty sure. Well, let's give it a try anyway.
We'll move quick.
You're right, Mike.
Move fast.
Yep.
Keep it moving tonight.
Oh, yeah, well, we're going to keep it moving. But we don't have a ton on there, so.
No, it seems like a light docket, so it'll be okay.
Yeah, and that bond issue, we all kind of agreed on it anyway.
I think everybody's a sponsor on it, so that should be a pretty easy passage.
Yeah, we just send it to the.
Send it to the voters, baby.
Send it to the voters and not worry about it, right? Okay with me.
Hey, everybody.
Good evening.
Hey, Chris.
How you doing?
It's Monday.
Happy Monday.
I know. Mondays seem longer, I don't know why. Because it's too nice out.
I know, it's beautiful out today, man.
Chris, I forgot to give you that thing, that tool.
Oh, that's all right.
I had it in my trunk.
No problem.
Hey, Mike, isn't today Saturday? I, yeah, I'm forgetting what day of the week it is. I never get, I can never remember now, but it's nice out. Doing everything from home.
I think every day should be Saturday. It is.
It is, yeah. I know, I love it. It was hot yesterday, though.
Oh, the pool's open, if anybody wants to jump in.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Pool and the hot tub.
No, no hot tub.
No hot tub, all right. I have to get my own.
Oh, it's not open. I left the water in it during the winter, and it froze the pipes. There's 15 Gs down the tube.
Oh, no.
I'm going to have it fixed, though, pretty soon.
You got to get it fixed. Yeah, I don't think we have, there's not much on tonight. We should get through this pretty quick.
The President.
Yes, sir, Director Pirlo.
I was telling Councilman Vicki I want to have the Colonel on for the executive session on Thursday. Just in case you guys have any questions that I'm not capable of answering, he should be able to bring that information to you guys.
Thank you, Director. You know, this is a good time to talk about this, since we're not really in the meeting yet. I think at some point, we should think about getting back to City Hall as we move into the next phase. I think, I think I know Providence is going back tonight, so maybe we can work on with Director Zarella or City Clerk Zarella about a plan to maybe broadcast the meetings. I know they're going to be live streamed, so that way for people to call in with questions potentially to a specified number. So I think we just have to start thinking about that, because we could probably get back at some point to the City Hall.
Okay, maybe we can shoot for the July council meeting?
That was, that was my intent, that end of the month council meeting. I think the committee meetings, we should be able to get through this. There's not a, there's a good amount of business going to them from the standpoint of docket ballot amendments. But there's nothing, there's no really zoning or heavy controversial matters that I think will come up before then. But I'd like to shoot for the July full council and get back to the council chamber.
Okay, we'll work on that, thank you.
Thank you, Director Pirlo.
Even if we have to move the chairs apart a little bit, we've got room in the chamber, so we could six, we could, we could create six foot.
And potentially taping off the pews, the areas to, you know, give space. So we could still have people, if they came, we could still be socially distant. So figuring out how many can get in there, what the number would be, how we would space them out, kind of like they're doing with church with every other pew and four feet apart. So I'd like to start getting, getting back to the chamber and doing the people's business and public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would be if, I know the cameras now are set up for each one of your positions. So we may have to have the camera company come in and maybe just bury that and lock in those eight new positions around the middle to make sure everyone has a complete coverage.
Yeah, that would be good. And then as far as the public calling in or sending in, we could figure out something. I mean, I suppose you could continue a Zoom. You could have a simultaneous Zoom meeting as well, but.
Yeah. So realistically, if we all brought our laptops, because the room has Wi-Fi, we could still be on Zoom, but also be in the chamber. So I think over the next few weeks, we'll probably get together and work on and figure out what the proper protocol is.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Sounds good.
Let me go to this view. Everybody in?
All right, I've got Paplouskas, I've got Councilman Hopkins, I've got Councilman Brady, I've got Councilman Favickio. I got Senator Five. Oh, Councilman Vargas, awesome. So give everybody a couple more minutes, looks like people are still, still trickling in.
I'm here.
Councilman McCauley here.
All right, I think, I think we have everybody.
Councilman Donigan, is he in?
Yep, I just saw him pop in, so it feels like everybody is here.
Perfect.
So with that, I will call the June council meeting to order. Madam Ward, take a roll.
Councilmember Stichels.
Here.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Councilmember Vargas.
Present.
Councilmember McCauley. Councilmember Donigan.
Present.
Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilwoman Paplouskas.
Present.
Councilwoman Favickio.
Present.
Councilwoman Freeno.
Present. All right, under public acknowledgements and commendations, it looks like there are none this evening. Under public hearings, before I stop public hearings, welcome to all the candidates for city council that have announced so far. It's good to have you here to witness a Zoom call, so I'm not going to name you, we know who you are. Under public hearings, this is open.
Council President.
Yes, Councilman McCauley.
May I have your permission to make a point of personal privilege, sir?
You may, Councilman McCauley.
I have a one-page letter to read into the record. I've given a copy and signed and dated it to the clerk today. Good evening, council members. Let me first say that no one knew I was writing this letter, including my family. On June 1st, at this month's Finance Committee meeting, I was publicly accused of possible felony conduct by someone I always treated with the utmost respect and whom I actually considered a friend. The ordinance I proposed at that time was, in my view, just a simple way of possibly saving taxpayer dollars at a time of significant hardship for many. Nothing more. I made my feelings known to both sides of the aisle prior to proposing that ordinance. There was no ulterior motive. If some of my colleagues were contacted by a third party that was done without my knowledge or urgent. I am 65 years old with an unblemished record. I have never been accused, never mind arrested, for any crime in my entire life. That evening Attorney Kirshenbaum suggested on more than one occasion that my attentions were politically motivated and suggested I was committing a felony. Shame on you, sir. What you suggested as attorney for the council was a travesty to your position. What hurt even more were the muted voices of my colleagues. Other than Councilman Hopkins, none of you came to my defense. I thought that you were all my friends that would at the very least defend my integrity. I know that I would have been there for all of you. If I do not receive an apology from Attorney Kirshenbaum this evening, please accept this letter as my resignation from the council effective immediately. Respectfully, Paul J. McCauley, Councilman Ward II. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman McCauley. Attorney Kirshenbaum, I know you're on, did you want to? Answer this?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Then I'm leaving this meeting, thank you.
Councilman McCauley, have a wonderful evening. Thank you for being here. Moving on with the business of the evening.
Council President?
Uh, yes.
Sorry. It's Councilman Donigan. I know that there's, I think there's a few people here tonight that are here to speak regarding the fireworks.
Oh, yes, we were under, I'm sorry, we were under public acknowledgements and commendations before that happened. So I will go back to public acknowledgements and commendations, so public comment, rather, and recognize members of the public to speak on any docketed matter. So one at a time, if you want to name and address the record and then make your statement. Sorry, John, thank you, I was taken off a little bit by what just happened.
Yep, quite all right.
Good evening, council members, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, my name is Christopher Ramos, that's C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R Ramos, R-A-M-O-S. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I reside at 107 Calaman Road, that's C-A-L-A-M-A-N here in Cranston. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen, here to express my distaste for all the recent excessive firework discharge. I believe this is a subject that Councilor Donigan will be addressing in his Councilmember Communications update and hopefully as a formal new business at the next council meeting. I know that all my neighbors will agree that in the last couple of weeks, we have seen an increase in discharge of fireworks in our ward and it's become excessive. In fact, we have had fireworks every single night for the last three weeks. These fireworks are not limited to weekends or holidays. The fireworks have been going off on work nights up until 11:00 PM in some instances. And our current city ordinance actually allows that. They go off for hours in all areas of the ward, and I'm here to ask the council to do something about this nuisance so that working residents who have to be up early for work can get some quiet time and so that dog owners like myself don't have to have their dogs freaking out during the whole duration of the fireworks going off. And so that residents and veterans with PTSD don't have to go into a stressed state of being. I asked that the council look into the curtain, city ordinance, beginning with the times allowed to shoot off fireworks and curve them down to something more considerate and respectable. Hopefully, we can update those times and then have our police department, if need be, enforce it. I hope I don't sound like Ebenezer Scrooge here, but it's not like these fireworks are only going off on weekends or, you know, Fourth of July, Memorial Day holidays as such. I appreciate your time and thank you and good luck to everyone running for election or reelection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramos. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on any docketed matters?
Yes, I would like to speak, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Name and address the record, please.
Jennifer Manzi, M-A-N-Z-I. I reside at 179 Calaman, C-A-L-A-M-A-N Road in Ward Three in Cranston. I also want to speak in regards to the fireworks nuisance. I echo Mr. Ramos's sentiment in that it has been going on for a, actually more than three weeks by my count. It started just before Memorial Day, and it is a nightly occurrence. It often starts around 8:00 PM and goes well into the evening. And some of the fireworks, at least from what I can see from my house, I believe that they are illegal. They're like the professional type in some instances with the colors and everything. My concern is also on a personal level. I have a seven-year-old daughter who has ADHD and anxiety, and her mind starts racing when she hears the noise. She starts to worry that they're actually gunshots. She's been up for weeks with nightmares because of this. We've had to work more closely with her therapist because of this. And it's a nightly occurrence. We keep trying to reassure her, it's just fireworks. And when they're visible fireworks, we do show her, and that has helped a bit. I mean, she's used to fireworks because, you know, it's America and, you know, the Fourth of July is a big celebration. But even she has said, mommy, it's not even summer yet. I mean, now, of course, it is, but, I mean, normally, stuff like this doesn't start until Fourth of July, and it is usually just around those holiday weekends. But this is every night, and it's really getting to be a bit much. And, you know, I also think of those with PTSD, and I worry for those as well, those citizens as well. There really needs to be something put in place to curtail this because it's really affecting the mental health of some of our citizens.
Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate you coming tonight, and Chris, too, to talk about fireworks. We don't challenge anyone else on the docket to speak, anyone else here to speak on any docketed matters?
This is Jay, this is Jay Bonner, I'd like to make a comment.
Good evening, Jay.
Jay Bonner, 41 Oak Street. I just want to talk on what the previous two people have mentioned about the fireworks. I'm over here behind Bane. The other day, we actually had the police department rolling through the neighborhood looking for culprits that were lighting off fireworks throughout the night. As they did state that it is, this is something that's occurring all night long. I've heard of myself on my nights off at 1:30 in the morning going off. This is something that, you know, I believe needs to be addressed by city council. I do know the police, they are aware of it, but there needs to be some kind of more ordinance. I believe, I think that we can work out something. I don't know. But it is starting to get to the point where it's disturbing the public, it's a nuisance. And as Miss Manzi stated about people with PTSD, I've had people reach out to me directly who are friends of mine that are suffering from PTSD that were during wartime. And some of these fireworks that are going off, they do sound like a mortar, they do sound. And it's affecting them. So I think it's something that city council needs to really look at, and I appreciate your time and thank you all for what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else to speak on any docketed matters?
Council President, if I may, can I have a clarification on what the ordinance is for fireworks currently?
Um, I don't, I mean, I, I think it's probably best to wait until we get to the point where we can discuss this under his council member communication. There's not a whole lot in the docket, so I think we can fly through the business, then get to that and have some discussion on it.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm also here because of the fireworks.
Okay, name and address of the record.
Nancy Batulie, 196 Knoll Brook Avenue in Cranston. And I, I'm just echoing what people are saying. You know, it's nightly, my concern is that, you know, my concern is witnessing them being lit right in the middle of the street. I mean, it's not, you know, we're not talking about the privacy of somebody's backyard with a lot of, with a lot of square footage. They were, they're being lit off right in the street, hitting neighbors' cars last night. I, I don't, I think it was like a street, so the smell of the smoke, people cheering and clapping. I'm concerned about fires, I mean, it's, it just doesn't. I mean, Fourth of July, I don't know what the rules are, I know, I mean, again, Fourth of July, it's one thing, but this is, this is like insane. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Batulie. Anyone else to speak on any docketed matters? I'll ask one more time because of remote, just in case someone was on mute. Anyone else to speak on any docketed matters? Hearing none, that section of the meeting is now closed. Resolutions, we have a resolution in recognition of the month of June as Pride Month, sponsored by council members Vargas, Donigan, Brady, Paplouskas, Hopkins, Council Vice President Favickio, and Council President Farina. I'll stand motion approved.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Under discussion, Councilmember Paplouskas. Councilmember, did you want to talk about this or just send up a vote?
Paplouskas or Vargas?
Vargas.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. It's your, it's your, you're the lead on it, so.
No, no worry, no, thank you so much, I appreciate it, Council President. Yes, as first and foremost, I'd like to go ahead and thank each and every one of you, the entire organization from Rhode Island Pride, the mayor's office, and everyone who joined in virtually or was there in person. This is the second Pride flag raising ceremony that took place in our city of Cranston. Obviously, it's been a tough year, just in general. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands and knows that here in the city of Cranston, everyone is welcome. And so obviously, during this time of need, we must again continue to unite peacefully to overcome prejudice and substance and continue to advocate for the rights of so many and also for the rights of the LGBTQ plus community. So thank you to everyone who signed their name on to co-sponsor this resolution and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Vargas, anyone else? Councilwoman Stichels.
I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Vargas for doing this. But I certainly support it, even though I'm not a co-sponsor. So I didn't do any work on it, so I thank Councilwoman Vargas for the work she did under typical circumstances.
Thank you, Councilmember Stichels. If you'd like, still room for two co-sponsors, if you'd like, I believe, I'm not sure how this works, but.
Well, sure.
Thank you.
Like to.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Just, if I may, Council President, just echoing what Steve said, same thing, Columbus, great job. Thank you for including us and let's continue to do work of, continue that great work, so thank you.
Any further comments? Hearing none, I just want to say before we vote that it was a great event. I was happy to be there and talk about equality. We really need to strive to treat everyone the same, we are all equal, and this was a great event to hear people, you know, talk. It was a little different than last year because of the situation we're in and the way we find our country. So I do want to thank Councilwoman Vargas for respecting that, that when it was first scheduled, it needed to be moved, moving it, making it virtual, and really doing everything in her power to make, pull off a good event across several communities. So thank you, Councilmember Vargas, so much for that, and we appreciate all you do for this council.
Thank you, each and every one of you.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stichels.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brady.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paplouskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Favickio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Freeno.
Yes. Moving on. Report of committees, Finance Committee, Council Vice President. We have a couple of small things on there, one that was, one big thing and a couple of small things, so floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. 4-20-04, Ordinance Authorizing Loan Order for the City of Cranston to Finance the Renewable Energy Systems and Energy Conservation Measures in the City of Cranston by issuance of not more than $5 million in bonds and notes therefore. And this was sponsored by Councilmembers Stichels, Donigan, Hopkins, Vargas, McCauley, Paplouskas, myself, and Council President Farina. And it passed unanimously, I believe, in committee at a urgent passage here. This is to send it to the voters.
I'll stand motion approved.
So move.
I have a motion, there's several seconds under discussion. I'll go to Councilman Donigan first and then Councilwoman Stichels, because they were the lead sponsors on this.
Yeah, I just, first, I want to say thank you to all the, everyone on the council. You know, I appreciate your openness and willingness to hear from Steve and I on this and, you know, work with us to get this out of the committee, and now it's great that we're all co-sponsoring it. I really appreciate that. Steve, I really appreciate the work you did on this. I know I was one of the initial co-sponsors, Steve really did a lot of the work, so he deserves the credit here. And I also want to thank people that reached out to their council members and their council representatives because I think that advocacy was really important, and I appreciate their work and their interest in protecting Cranston's future, ensuring that we have a livable future in combating climate change. And this is an important issue, and I think that it's one that as we see less action at the federal level, this is something that is going to fall on states, but also on cities and towns. And I think that we can do this and we need to do this. And so I appreciate all of my colleagues for supporting this, and I look forward to supporting this and voting yes enthusiastically.
Councilwoman Stichels, you want to? No, you sure you're the other co-sponsor?
Yes. I'd also like to thank everyone, and I think that assuming that it passes in a few minutes, I hope everyone encourages the public to vote for it because that's how it's going to happen. And I also, I think that we will hopefully generate ideas of what can be done in the city. I heard from Ed Brady about the possibilities at the ice rink. And the more ideas we get out there, we can, as a city, pick the best ones that are going to eliminate the most climate changing gases and also save the city the most money. So thank you again, and let's get this passed in November.
Hey, Councilman Brady, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just want to reiterate a lot of what John said. I had some reservations at first. Both the sponsors did a great job of answering all those reservations and much to what John said about many residents reaching out. I truly appreciate it. You know, it certainly made the decision a lot easier, and furthermore, I look forward to developing some additional planning like at the ice rink, like Councilman Stichels said, and continuing to work on how we can rightfully spend this money so that we can efficiently use it to save money throughout the city. I didn't hear my name as a co-sponsor, but if it was just left off by mistake, I would gladly like to be added if it pleases the sponsors also.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll just say that this is a very important issue that we should send to the voters, and hopefully they get the message. Green energy is very important. I think this is a bond to ask for money, not necessarily to spend money. The goal with this will be to put this on the ballot, to give the next mayor the ability to bond for these funds to do some good, to try to create green energy. I know there will be some costs as we work on this, as we look forward, but since we have a $140 million school bond on the ballot as well, it would be good to potentially put these two things in tandem and try to work through school bonding as well as green energy bonding. With that, I'll stand motion.
Councilmember Farina.
Council President Farina, I just, Bob Strom. Real quick, I just want you to know, it gets passed tonight. It is part of the bond resolutions that will be going to the legislation for approval to put on the ballot. There's also other resolutions, but this is one that was prepared by our bond council as well as the school and some others.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else?
Council President, yep, Council President, this is Lamas, if I may, real quickly, sorry.
No worries.
Thank you. I, too, would like to go ahead and thank both the council members who sponsored. The bonding is definitely important, to make sure that we continue to make our city renewable, have renewable energy, whether it's in our school buildings or in our city buildings, it's the way to go, it's the 21st century. And so once again, I thank you both and everyone else who's also sponsored, and thank you, thank you to both council members to, for allowing me to also co-sponsor, put my name on this. And I definitely highly, highly, highly encourage all of us to make sure that we let the city residents know about this bonding. If it is passed on the state.
if it is passed on the state level and added to our ballots in November. Thank you.
What else? Hearing none, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stychos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paplouskas?
Yes.
Council vice president Vivekio?
Yes.
Council president Farina.
Yes.
Next, we had a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements, passed unanimously at rich passage here.
Oh, it's a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion of second, under discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stychos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paplouskas?
Yes.
Council vice president Vivekio?
Yes.
Council president Farina.
Yes.
And lastly, we had tax interest waiver approvals. This passed unanimously at rich passage here.
I'll send a motion to approve.
So move.
Have a second? Did I get a second?
Second.
Councilmember Vargas seconded it, I believe.
Under discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stychos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paplouskas?
Yes.
Council vice president Vivekio?
Yes.
Council president Farina.
Yes. I believe that concludes the work of the finance committee. Public hearing, this is open to any docketed matter. So please, if you have any docketed matter?
Point of information, council president?
Sure.
Yeah, actually, this is public hearing on comment on any, any item?
Any item, anything at all.
Technically, the, we allow the, the comment on fireworks under docketed items, but they're really not a docketed item for, for voting. The council member communications, I just want to remind everyone that it doesn't matter tonight because we're going to deal with it either, in either space, but technically, council communications.
We've, we've run up against that before with open meetings, so I just allowed it because if you remember Ramsey Davis came a couple of years ago and we had a split and, and the, the OMA is not clear as to when it goes, so we just, if somebody gets up and speaks at this point, I just allow it if we have two options for them as opposed to trying to stop and fight for and restart, so.
Yeah, no, I, I just.
It gets confusing for residents and I don't want to, you never want to stop comment. So this is open to anything. Anyone would like to say anything now with the time? Hearing none, comment? Hello? Someone want to? Hearing none, that section of the meeting is now closed. Election of city officials, public library board of trustees, appointment of Diane Schaffer, Schaefer, filling the unexpired term of Fred Miller for the term ending July 27th, 2022. I believe everyone received her resume from the clerk through Director Garcia. Does anyone have any questions on this appointment? Hearing none, I'll, have motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of a second, under discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stychos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paplouskas?
Yes.
Council vice president Vivekio?
Yes.
Council president Farina.
Yes. Before we move off this, there was, there was another member of the library board that will, the term will expire over the summer. Councilman Stychos has asked that person be reappointed. I sent that email to Director Garcia and he will be following up with the appointee to ensure that they want to be reappointed. I'm assuming since councilman Stychos said that they will, but we'll go through the protocol and let Director Garcia submit the letter probably next month, so we'll have another one to do. Report of city officers. I don't see any on there, but I'll go to executive communication, Director Perillo.
Yes, Mr. President, if no one has any questions regarding the legal expense analysis, I am just asking, Assistant Chief James Warren is asking to be continued in service for one year. He has passed his medical testing and is requesting the council's approval of his continuation of service.
Motion to approve.
Have motion approved. Have a second?
Second.
Have motion of a second, under discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stychos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paplouskas?
Yes.
Council vice president Vivekio?
Yes.
Council president Farina.
Yes.
Council president?
Yes.
Regarding legal fees.
Ah, you have a question?
Yeah.
Director Perillo, you have a question?
Director Perillo, what is the status of the traffic safety litigation case that you can share publicly?
As far as I know, it's ongoing. I haven't had any updates recently, so I'm not exactly sure what the court status of it is, but I know it is still in litigation.
Okay. I think based on the last time we spoke, the city spent about $122,000 in court fees for this file, for this case. I just think.
I believe that's what I sent you, yes, sir.
Just maybe considering the fiscal, you know, the financial strains that every municipality is feeling going into next year, maybe that's money that could be better spent elsewhere. Going to the schools, rental assistance programs to keep people in their homes rather than dealing with people that are already homeless. It might be, it just might be money better invested elsewhere. And I hope that the administration will consider that.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions on the legal fees?
I have just follow.
Council vice president Vivekio.
Yeah, just, just a reminder, though, you have to be careful when you're dealing with litigation because you don't just, at this point, say, oh, I, I'd rather spend the money somewhere else. Because if you have a change of heart or something, you could be ordered to pay substantial attorney fees for the other side. So in some of these situations, we have no choice. We, we, you know, once you're in, you're in, and you, you know, you have to decide how far to go with it. I think this was a winnable, winnable argument. We have no choice at this point, I think the court shut down.
Easy, easy, I don't want to get into arguments of winnable versus non-winnable at the council.
Yeah. No, I was just going to say.
I appreciate it, I just, just.
Yeah, no, the, the courts are shut down, and the other thing is the courts are shut down, have been shut down for quite a while, so, and everything is backlogged. So nothing is going anywhere too quickly. I just wanted to let everyone know that.
That you could say.
I mean, maybe we could have an executive session on this at some point because I mean, I certainly understand the intent of some of the points being made.
Yeah, that would be the proper form, council member. So if, if we think when we get back into action in, in maybe August, early August, we can do an executive session to get an update because at that point, I think courts will be back in session or starting back up and will be a, something to talk about in executive session. So I think I'll work with the clerk on taking a note and see if we can get what's scheduled on potentially a night where we have another meeting and we're all already there. That way we can have a half our executive session, kind of discuss this with the administration.
Go on.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. Any other questions on the legal report? Hearing none, it's council president communications. This will probably be the last time I speak to as council president before the 4th of July. I just want to say everyone have a happy and safe 4th of July. Stay safe, I know there's been a lot of talk about fireworks. People who live across the street from me have an autistic son, so we've been working hard, the neighborhood, to make sure that, that neighbors know that fireworks just, you know, in, in moderation, I think it's, it's not an issue, it's when it becomes a nightly, hourly, you know, two hours of fireworks. I think we all know that fireworks can be bought in New Hampshire and people do. And if we respect each other, I think we can solve a lot of the problems we're seeing. So with that, I will move on to council member communications. Councilman Donigan, the fireworks complaints is up first. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, council president. Yeah, I mean, really not a lot more to add other than what some of the, the residents have already input, you know, living in the stadium neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's a nightly bombardment and, and I think bombardment is the appropriate descriptor. From, from a council standpoint, I'm, you know, I'm always trying to think about what we can do. And I'm going to be honest, this is one where I think there's, there's some gray because like Chris, Mr. Ramos mentioned, there is, there's language in the city code, 8.20.060, that talks about dates and times, and it does permit it till 11:00 PM, but it's only permitted, and what's permitted is legal consumer fireworks are permitted on July 1st until 11:00 PM, July 2nd and the 3rd until 11:00 PM, and July 4th until 4:00 PM. And that, I'm sorry, until midnight. And, and that, that list of dates is exhaustive in the city code. And so that, but what's causing the issue, at least to my knowledge, are fireworks, like you, like you kind of mentioned, council president, that are, they're ones that are being bought in New, in New Hampshire. They're already, again, as a non-attorney looking at state statutes, they're already prohibited under state law. So what's, what's occurring, you know, the past few weeks is already prohibited. I'm not sure from a legislative side what we can do to prohibit something that's already prohibited, and so it's a matter of enforcement. And I completely understand that going around the city and stopping people from shooting off fireworks is, is not the easiest task. By the time you get there, they're probably done. So I guess it's, it's really more of an open question. What can we do, you know, from a legal standpoint to our attorney? What can we do, if anything, on the council side to try and prohibit this? And then, you know, in collaboration with the administration and law enforcement, what can we do to try and, hopefully it ends after the 4th, but if it doesn't, you know, what can we do?
So I'll, I'll welcome any member of either legal side to talk to this or the, anyone from the administration to answer the questions.
I did speak to the Colonel today about this and they, the PD is, is experiencing seven times the calls that they've had in the past regarding fireworks over the years. We are not alone. I think every city and town is going through this, whether it's the after effects of being locked up with COVID or people want to express some celebratory relationship. I don't know, but we are trying to do our best. PD, as you know, has a lot of stuff going on. The two biggest issues there for them are actually pinpointing some of the calls, the actual addresses where they are emanating from. And then like the councilman said, sometimes by the time they get there, the fireworks have already stopped, you know, there's no one there but remnants of fireworks. So those two are issues. We are getting plenty of calls, there are plenty of people calling and telling us that fireworks are going off, but it's just very difficult to address all of these concerns at once. And they are going, like I said, until midnight in some neighborhoods. So it's really, it's non-stop right now.
Council president, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, council one, please, take, take away.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, you know, I, I just sent, actually, as a matter of fact, not too long ago, to Director Perillo, I'm not sure, I think you might have received my email, I'm not sure, but it was also complaining, it was pretty much coming in from Bayview as well that I, a couple of calls that I got yesterday and then another one today being set up in the afternoon. So definitely agree, it's happening throughout the entire city and probably throughout the entire state. But I'm not sure again as far as what can potentially really be enforced or if there's conversations at all at the state law, if we can do anything if it does continue. But definitely happy to work with any one of you on, on this issue because councilmember Donigan, you're not the only one getting it as well. And as to your point and council president's point, there's definitely kids that are, have some sort of, you know, problem they can't go to sleep, even some are veterans as well, people in the military as well. So it's definitely a concern and it's, it's just, I think it's, it's a very tough ordinance, I would assume, to enforce, but I just don't know how do we get to the any gritty of this. But it's definitely something that we're all experiencing with as far as getting emails or calls from our constituency.
And I, I don't know truthfully if changing the ordinance would make a difference. Like the councilman said, all the stuff that flies is illegal. Everything that explodes is already illegal. So I don't know if a city ordinance change would, would help the situation or not. I think there's enough state law that the PD can enforce. Again, it's just having the offices and the time and the location to actually do that.
I agree with the director, council president.
Can I, for the record of maybe to Director Perillo or city, one of the attorneys on there, just to confirm, what, what are the times? I'm just making sure because I read it in one place.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear now.
Okay, all right, thank you. There are no times, as Director Perillo said, there are no times for anything that makes a noise. What is okay in Rhode Island are the things that sparkle, that's it. Things that go boom are not allowed in the state of Rhode Island, period. Now, the only way to legally do that in, in this, in the city is to obtain a permit from the fire department in connection with some kind of festival or something like that and get an actual permit from them to, that they have to inspect it and make sure that it's proper according to the fire code. There's no legal way to set off anything in the state of Rhode Island that goes boom or explodes. Those are from out of state and all of it is illegal and there's nothing that we pass that can help or hurt this situation. I think it's just a, it's a nuisance for the police department. This happens periodically throughout the years that I've seen. It's very hard to trace because soon as they get the lights, it's middle of the night and the kids who are lighting it off run away and it's hard to track it down. So it's just a, it's a terrible problem to clamp down.
Mr. Christian, what is the penalty, I guess, or the, the, the right for each offense if there was to be someone where the police department has some sort of encounter on setting off these fireworks?
I'm not sure about that, but I think it would be under, under state law.
For the chair.
I'm reading a thousand, but I'm not sure on this. I'm reading the state law, but I, I don't know if it's the right one. Okay.
I'll, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Yep, no worries, thank you.
Thank you.
The chair, can you hear me?
Yeah, I was waiting for you, Director, because I know you had spoke. And then I see councilman Hopkins and Stychos.
Oh, this is Vivekio.
Oh, I'm sorry, I tried Vivekio.
Thanks for the promotion to Director. Just to answer councilwoman Vargas's question, state law makes it a misdemeanor to, for firecrackers and things like that. It's felony if it's something like an aerial display. So that's where the dividing line seems to be. But it is a misdemeanor.
Thank you, Mr. Vivekio. I was reading that on the state statute saying that it was 500, but not exceeding the 500 for each offense during our imprisonment, prison for not more than one year. So I wasn't sure if I was looking at the right one.
On the 1113 one, yeah, that's correct.
Correct, yep, sale user possession of fireworks, got it, thank you.
That's one that I just saw.
Okay.
Okay, so anyone else besides the directors? Now we go to councilman Stychos, then councilman Hopkins.
Okay, I'll go tomorrow.
Yeah, I just, I've also gotten complaints.
I passed over.
You're going in another room?
Whoever's talking, can they mute, please, so we can? Thank you.
I've also got, gotten complaints and I know I'd be interested to speak, like to hear from other council people, but it used to be that speaking was the number one complaint that I would get. And noise, not necessarily fireworks, but all kinds of noise, whether it's northeast tree noise or the firing range noise or loud music being played late at night or fireworks is, I think now is the number one complaint that I get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Verstekos. Councilmember Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think there's a segment of our society that is really being affected by this. Those of us that are dog lovers have a real issue with this. There are literally thousands of homeowners in the city of Cranston that have dogs. Many of them in my campaigning have complained to me about the, the noises at night where the dogs literally run under the chairs and under the couch or into another room shaking because of the fireworks. So again, I'm just advocating for those, that segment of the population that owns dogs. And I have three of them myself. And it's very, very difficult when the fireworks are going off.
Thank you, Councilmember Hopkins. Anyone else? A council member speak on this? Hearing none. I would just say I think it's important that we, we step up enforcement. I know it's difficult on the police for all the reasons that, that was said. I think it's a challenge that we have to work to overcome. Director Perillo brought up a good point that, that coming out of the COVID situation and a lot of people still being home, there's probably some people buying a lot of mail order fireworks, setting them off. So I think as a group, we can work to continue to push this to be better for our residents. Now we'll move on to-
Council president.
Yes, Councilmember Donigan.
Sorry, just while we're still under my communications, I just want to, if this was Councilman McCauley's last city council meeting, I just want him to know how deeply respected he is by this body and how much he has meant to me the past 18 months, being a first-term councilperson. You know, I was, thought I would say this to him months from now, but, you know, we didn't always agree. But I never questioned his intent on anything. And I think hopefully as the people write about this and about Paul and his time on the council, hopefully they remember, you know, what a hard worker he was and how diligently he represented his, his constituents and, and the upstanding person that he was and not so much, you know, how this came about. But Paul is a great public servant and we need more people like Paul.
Yeah, my hope is that cooler heads will prevail. Councilmember Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Here, Councilman Donigan, I concur with you. I think this is one of the worst days in the history of Cranston politics. When we see a man with the integrity, the character and the willingness to serve like Paul McCauley did. And I had no idea that this was coming tonight. But for him to be treated the way he was treated and the disrespect, I, I plan on getting a letter of correspondence into the city clerk tomorrow to discuss this matter in executive session because I think it is extremely reprehensible about the way he was treated and the way he was disrespected. And I will pursue this. Thank you.
Councilmember Verdeckia?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Councilman Donigan's thoughts. I, I hope that Councilman McCauley does come back and finish his term because I think he's been a tremendous asset to the city and he, he's been, become friend, I think, to, to, to all of us. So, but I, I think, I, I hope cooler heads prevail. I hope he can see fit to come back. I don't think any of us meant him any disrespect or any harm. Certainly, certainly welcome. Going to miss him. And I, I, I hope he comes back. But anyway, just, just like to say that.
Councilmember Verstekos?
I'd just also like to recognize that Paul worked hard as a councilman. Often when I would get complaints from residents of Ward 2, I would say, you know, your councilman is so-and-so, Paul McCauley, give him a call. He's very good. He follows up. He does what he can. And I think that really, if you talk to the people who really matter, which is the residents of Ward 2, they, the ones who've had contact with Paul will certainly tell you that he gets back to them. He does what he can to solve problems. And I, I do think he's a hard worker and he'll be more-
Who else?
Council president.
You may, Councilmember Paploskus, then Councilmember Bogus.
And Brady.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Council president. I just want to say, you know, echo my colleagues. But, you know, there's a big hole on the council tonight in Holden Ward 2. And Paul worked extremely hard, not only the residents of Ward 2, but across the whole city. And, you know, I was hoping that we would be saying, you know, bye to him in a few months and not now. And he's going to be missed by, I, I know he's going to be missed by all of us. And I really hope he reconsideres and, and comes back. And I missed him already. So hopefully he comes back. That's all I got.
Councilmember Bogus?
Hello?
Yep, Councilmember Bogus.
Thank you. Thank you, council president. Yeah, so I echo also what my council colleagues have said. Thank you, Councilman Donigan, for bringing this up. And unfortunately, this is not the time or was not the time or the place where I actually wanted to say these words to Councilman McCauley. Obviously, he, he loves the city as much as we all do. He's also taken his role extremely seriously. And I, I just want him to know, and, and I will definitely be reaching out to him directly as well. That if this was in fact his, his last meeting, thank you for the times that he served. Thank you for his face of public service. I've said it to him already, but I just obviously did not expect this. So it just definitely took me by, by surprise. But I also, I, I understand where he comes from at the very same time. And he was extremely bothered by this. And I don't think we should be questioning his integrity or the type of person that Mr., that Councilman McCauley is because we've definitely seen it throughout the last few years. And although Ybolsul just started with him within the last, this current term, the last year and a half or so, we also have not agreed with and everything, but we also make sure that we respectfully disagree when we do disagree. Respectfully, obviously, we gratefully agree when we do agree. And so it's, it, it just took me by surprise. So hopefully in some way shape or form, he stays still specifically active within the community here in the city of Cranston. Thank you.
Councilmember Brady?
Thank you, council president. You know, echoing what my, all my colleagues have said, I feel very strongly about Paul. I can't help but say that I didn't get emotional when I started hearing him choke up reading that letter because I know what kind of man he is and the man of integrity that, you know, has became a close friend, just like many of you all on this council, regardless of party. Like I said, I didn't disagree, I didn't necessarily agree with him on this issue. I can't, I would never put into question his character and the person that he, who he is. Had he not showed up for an initial meeting when I was appointed, I may not, you know, never been able to start the work of, of a city councilman. So I, I can't say how much I appreciate him as a mentor and as a friend. And I really truly hope that this isn't his last day. But if it is, I truly respect him. And I, he'll be, he'll truly be missed, but he'll hopefully continue to be a friend for the rest of my life.
So just to remind everybody, Councilmember McCauley, though he announces resignation tonight, is still a member of this council until he submits his letter to either Madam Clerk or myself declaring his resignation. So hopefully we can all talk to him and discuss with him and ask that he stay on the council. He's very important to the body. I think he's continued to work with everyone and really fought for, fights for the city of Cranston. So hopefully as he gets to tomorrow, he will rethink his decision to abruptly leave the body. And the way he did, it is sad to say the least. So hopefully he will reconsider his decision before he submits his letter of resignation. So if you are friendly with him, I'll be reaching out to him tonight, tomorrow. I'm sure all of you should as well. With that, I will move on to a much more different topic. Councilmember Verstekos's tree planting program celebration of 200 planting.
Yeah. Neighborhood tree planting program planted its 200th tree this year and was suggested by the tree council that we have some kind of commemoration of that. I did approach the mayor about scheduling a date. And he said that, you know, the council should schedule a date and he'll make it if he can. I just wanted to throw that out there to people if you're interested in, in participating, what, what would be a good day? I think it would be at a, I'm not sure who, John Campanini from the tree council. And a couple of people who were willing to sort of have the celebration or the commemoration at, at their house where their tree is that the planted under the program. And it would just be a, be a place event. And it would also be a way to further publicize the program and hopefully get more people signed up for next year. I'm open to suggestions of Saturday or-
Steve, I'd love to be involved.
Yeah, I would also prefer a Saturday, a weekend day, whether it be a Saturday or Sunday just because it's easier for residents and myself who work full-time during the week to get to something on a Saturday morning or Sunday morning.
Same here, Councilmember Verstekos as well. Happy to help out in anything that you need help with for this celebration. And I agree with council president, I think weekends are better, probably get more folks, whether it's, you know, celebrating, whether you're doing anything also virtually, those that can't be there in general or those that can be there. I think Saturday morning works for me. But at the same time, whatever works for the people in our community and yourself.
Okay, Saturday morning it is. What about, you have any preferences on month or something?
Councilmember Verstekos, do you think July is too, just too hot? It's just going to be-
Been outside today. Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think August might be, late August, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing. I just think you may have, if it's 90 degrees on a Saturday, people may not show.
It's a problem. Well, why don't I, why don't I contact the tree council, see what's convenient for them? And we'll aim for a Saturday morning.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Council president, if I may, under communications-
You may, council member.
Thank, thank you. I apologize that I didn't email this, but this, I just wanted to make sure for, for any parents or anyone who has kids here in our city, just wanted to make sure that everybody does know that Aramark is still providing free meals for our kids, starting as of today till different five sites at Cranston High School East, Edgewood Highland, George Peters, Glassland Elementary School and Higginson Middle School. And it's every Monday and Wednesday. And I believe Friday is as well. But I just want to thank Aramark and everyone else involved to make sure that our kids continue to have a free meal during the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other council communications? Hearing none. We will, old business, there is no old business, introduction to new business. I will entertain a motion to send all of new business to the proper committee as a block.
Motion to approve.
And we'll send all the new business to the proper committee as a block. And a second, Coco, it's okay. Dog's going a little nuts. And a second, under discussion, hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Verstekos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogus?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskus?
Yes.
Council vice president Vericchio?
Yes.
Council president for you.
Yes. There is no miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk. City council's next regular month meeting will be held on July 27, 2020, hopefully in person. So we'll see you all live. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.